We're going to call this City of Gallatin Council Committee Meeting, September 13, 2022, 6:00 PM. Meeting to order. We'll have our roll call with Ms. Kitchell at this time.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Fann.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilman Overton.
Present.
And Vice Mayor Fennell and Councilwoman Love are absent, but we do have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchell. You have before you the August 23, 2022 Council Committee Meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Overton and the second by Ms. George. Any changes or correction? If not, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public recognition, anyone here from the public, you may come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes. Anyone from the public? All right. I mean, thank you. Mayor's comment.
Thank you. I do have several things this evening, some I'll repeat next week when we are having the official meeting. But first of all, I want you all to be aware and ask that you extend your thoughts and prayers to the family and friends of Danny Dialle. He passed away after many years of service with the Gallatin Police Department. That was this morning. His funeral is on Thursday, and we have sent those arrangements out, and then the Police Department will be helping with his service. So I know that they would appreciate you thinking of them in the days ahead. I certainly want to say a big thank you for all who participated in the 9/11 service last week, particularly the Gallatin Fire Department. They did a lovely job with it. It was well attended. Thank you too to Lyndon and crew for getting the sound system happening and all the good things happening. Couple other people or places that I want to mention from that day, because there were a lot of efforts both that day and over the weekend in recognition of our first responders in memorial of that day. Grace Point Church, along with Bit of Heaven Gathering Place Catering, they hosted a lunch over there for first responders. Alexander Funeral Home, of course, did the beautiful field of flags that you saw. They also hosted a lunch for first responders, and then Charter Senior Living had an ice cream social that afternoon. Also, thanks to all who participated, organized, and worked, the Parks Department's Doggy Paddle Pool Party, which is the official ending to the pool season at the Tommy Garrett Aquatics Center. Also, for 9/11, I do want to recognize our firefighters who did the 9/11 stair climb in Nashville. There is a long list of 41 firefighters who participated. Quickly, I'll run through the names. Brett Victor, Stephen Kern, Sean Raymond, Kylie Taitano, I hope I said that correctly, Ken Conley, Josh Seward, Jeremiah Hacker, Jeffrey Swift, Clayton Swafford, Blake Hawn, Austin Bogle, Chad Lynn, Josh Wheeler, Colton Hawn, Matt Mills, Nick Kirkendall, Ethan Stinson, Austin Brown, Tim Cuss, TJ Sexton, PJ Bradford, Jacob Snow, Chris Collins, Cody Vivian, Bradley Spooner, Brian O'Laughlin, Zach Morrison, DJ Bates, Caleb Carter, Houston Anderson, Ben Sproul, Rich Goddard, Tyler Rackey, Mark Hall, Scott Woodward, Candace Do Lash, Lee Daniels, Chad Metters, Cody Morgan, Russell Hopkins, and Ben West. I think that's the most we've ever had participate from our department, so congratulations and thank you to all of them for doing that. Also have several events I want you to be aware of. The first isn't coming up till October, but I think it was mentioned last week, but I do want to remind everyone that Kim, I want to say Baker, I want to say Kim Myers, Kim Baker from the Gallatin Chamber and I are working together to do the Homer Bradley Motorcycle Ride for Food again this year to benefit Feed Sumner, which is the new food bank established by First Baptist Church out of Hendersonville, although it is located in Gallatin. That motorcycle ride is on October 8, 2022. Everybody I know that has ever done this ride says it's a fabulous ride, so I'd encourage you to participate. Moreover, I would encourage you to lend dollars to support the effort, because those will go directly to Feed Sumner. So that is on October 8. Registration at 9, ride at 10. It's $30 per bike, 15 per additional rider, and lunch is provided at the end. The other events that I'll run through with each of you is Thursday on Main. This is this Thursday. It's the Alexander Lane Band. It kicks off at 6:30. Also, Gallatin High School is presenting the Magic Golden Apples at the theater there at 7:00 PM. I imagine that will run several nights. I've heard that's a great production, if you'd like to check that out. This Friday is Moonlight Market at the Gallatin Farmers Market. This Friday and Saturday is the Gallatin Saratoga Club Truck and Tractor Pool. Mr. DeBoer spoke about that last week. I believe that the first night is actually kind of the local event like we've always had, and then the second night is an actual competition in the region. It's a pretty big deal. On Saturday, the Lions Club Journey for Sight Bike Ride happens. It starts here at 7:30 in downtown Gallatin. Also, Walk Across Sumner Superhero 5K and Fun Run is happening at the Gallatin Civic Center. That's at 7:35 on Saturday. There's also a neat thing that happens in Hartsville, and it's the First Responder Alpha Games. I believe they started it last year, and it was on September 11 last year, but this year they moved it away from that. But it's a competition happening in Hartsville for all area first responders, and I talked to someone not from here, but from somewhere else that participated, and they really had a great time last year. So that's happening on that Saturday. And then that afternoon is the Classic Cars Cruise In over at the Gallatin Civic Center, 4 to 8. Skipping ahead to the 23rd, Governor William Trousdale's Birthday Party at Trousdale Place. And I want it on everybody's calendar that the Gallatin High School Homecoming Parade does happen at 4:00 PM. It causes a traffic hangup, but it's a fabulous local tradition, and I think a lot of people are very supportive of that. But stay off the streets for a little while that afternoon if you don't want to get stuck in traffic. That is going to conclude the mayor's comments.
Mayor, if I might, I just want to add to be sure the tractor pools this weekend, Friday and Saturday, and I had a person that wanted me to be sure to tell everybody that it's to benefit the Christmas for kids and for hearing aids for kids. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Now we're on the agenda. Item number one, Resolution Number R2208-60, approve a new job description created by a pay study. Ms.
Move to defer.
Second.
Been deferred by Mr. Overton, second by Mr. Hayes. Any question or comments? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two, orders number zero.
Just a moment. When is it deferred to? Okay, thank you.
For two weeks. Item number two, orders number 02209-49, rezoning two lots totaling 0.77 plus and minus acres from the R15 Medium Density Residential District to the R10 Medium Density Residential District located west of Gwynne Avenue and north of Long Halla Pike. Mr. McCoy, City Planner.
Bill McCoy, City Planner. This first item that we have tonight is a request to rezone two lots on the northwest corner of Gwynne Avenue and Long Halla Pike. As shown here in the photograph, arrow photograph, it comprises of an existing house on the immediate corner and a vacant lot just to the north at 102 Gwynne Avenue. The properties to the west are and towards along Long Halla Pike and Walnut Crest area are zoned R10, and most of the properties, all of the properties that is on Gwynne Avenue are zoned now R15. There is a church that's located across the street, and the north boundary of the church property generally aligns with the north boundary of the north lot that the applicant is requesting for rezoning. There are a couple of duplexes that were approved in the R15 zoning district that exist along Gwynne Avenue. The applicant is looking to rezon these two lots. It is adjacent to R10 to the west. The intent is for the northerly lot, the applicant is proposing to apply for a conditional use permit to, through the BZA, for a duplex, to construct a duplex on that lot. Duplex was approved on the lot immediately to the west of this on Long Halla Pike, already in the R10 zoning district. So the applicant now wants to just zone the property from R15, which is a Medium Density Residential District, to R10, which is also a Medium Density Residential District. It comprises, both lots comprise about three quarters of an acre of land. The Planning Commission did review this request and recommends approval of an ordinance that you have before you. And if you have any other questions, I'll see if I can answer those.
Most approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Overton, second by Ms. George. Any question or comments for Mr. McCoy? Not all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three, orders number 02209-50, rezoning 2.77 plus and minus acres from the RR10 Residential, I mean, I'm sorry, RR Residential District to the MRO, Multi Residential and Office District, and approve a preliminary master development plan for Carwell Place. Mr. McCoy, City Planner.
Okay, this next item is also a rezoning case. It is rezoning of only 2.77 acres. And you may remember just recently you approved a resolution to annex this 2.77 acre parcel of land, or portion of a parcel. The balance of the parcel is already in the city and zone MRO. The applicant is wanting to use this portion of the property to develop a townhome product, and what we'll have is 120 townhomes that essentially surrounds the Capstone Assisted Living Facility out there on Nashville Pike, just east of Cages Ben Road. So this property is between Cages Ben Road and the Foxland Development or the Vintage at Foxland Apartments, and again surrounds the Capstone. Part of the master plan here is extending a public street, Foxland Boulevard, from its current terminus there in Phase 14, Foxland, which is behind the vintage apartment complex, over to Cages Ben Road, and will line up with the driveway that goes on to Kroger. So you would be able to, let's for example, once this road is developed, to travel all the way from, if you live in Foxland Subdivision, or you're at the Foxland Country Club, or that area over there, to travel over to Kroger back and forth without having to get onto Highway 31. We'll include a roundabout that will be an extension of Miss B Boulevard, which is already built and is essentially functioning as the driveway to the Capstone Development right now. So each of these will be townhomes on individual lots. It is zoned MRO, and they're asking for MRO zoning on the 2.77 acre piece of property. The driveways and/or private streets that serve each of the townhomes will create a backloaded appearance, so you'll see the fronts of these townhomes from the major roadways, including the Foxland Boulevard Extension. Stormwater will be provided onsite within common area open spaces. The average in the MRO, if they were plating single-family homes, they could plat lots in 6,000 square feet is a minimum. With the open space, each of these lots will exceed 6,000 square feet, even though none of the lots are 6,000 square feet. So they provide about twice as much area per unit as what's the minimum required in the R of MRO zoning district. So they also are going to be providing not only parking within garages, and I'll show you the, let me go back real quick. This area shows the green. The green areas will be open space tracks within the development. And this is what the architecture of the units will look like. There'll be a series of attached units, and they will be 70% or more brick and stone, facades on all sides. And so you can see in the bottom center picture there is the backloaded from the private drives and alleys. So these will be what you'll see from the public street, for example, front of a home like that. The number of parts, they will be providing excess parking, 65 additional surface parking spaces, and you can pick those out. They'll be dispersed throughout the development. The Planning Commission did review this and recommends approval of the ordinance to zone this property with employment and master development plan.
May by Mr. Overton, second by Mr. Hayes. Any question or comments?
I do want to comment one thing. I think it's important for particularly the public to realize that this has been zoned, with the exception of this two-acre piece, for years and years and years and years. And the time that I've been in office, I'd always heard that it was going to be apartments and pretty heavy impact apartments. And so this is one of those where I'm actually grateful for the change that happened. And while it's not single-family homes, it's also not multifamily. So.
Lenon does a good product, too.
Yes.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four, you again, Mr. McCoy, orders number 02209-51.
Okay. This next item is a request for a master development plan, preliminary master development plan within the Lackey-Pud. It would also constitute a PUD amendment, Plan Unit Development Amendment. The Lackey-Pud is the properties, this property is kind of wedged between the Commons Office Park area and Dance Studio on the west side of Hancock Street, south of Commons Drive, and roughly across the street from the EPU facility over there on Hancock Street. So the applicant has 3.64 acres and is what's to amend the plan and develop condominium complex. And that, I'll come back to that. Condominium complex with the 52 condominium-type units and two dri, actually one driveway to and from Hancock Street, and then be comprised of a circular drive, private drive with on surface parking. There would be no garages for these condominium units. The Lackey-Pud was approved many years ago, and what's happened over time is basically it's been developing. It still has some vacant areas. Of course, this piece is one of the larger pieces that are vacant. But it stretches all the way from about, almost the post office of the south side of Gallatin High School, over and across Highway 109, includes the convenience store and the assisted living facility. A few years ago, there were some changes that were made to the southeastern portion of the master, oop, keep on there, to the master plan, and it changed it from an office type of use, commercial and office type use, to an apartment complex, which is the overlooked apartment. So that provided additional residential units in addition to the existing Greenwood Apartments and the Brookdale ECLF. And then a couple of years ago, the extreme western portion of the Office Park at Commons Drive was also changed to accommodate for an ECLF. So this request tonight would also change some commercial or office type of uses, which was designated initially as a community assembly, to a residential use. So the density that is proposed is about the maximum that would be allowed on this size of property, is 3.64 acre property. After discussion with the Planning Commission, there was some concern about having some continual loss of commercial lands within this PUD, given that what I've just described, that we've already approved more residential than was ever intended for the PUD itself. The PUD, as you also see here that's outside the bounds, also includes some single-family homes as well. So there's sufficient residential development within this particular area that doesn't warrant necessarily that we continue to rezon this PUD for residential uses. And basically, that is the findings of the Planning Commission, is they don't want to give up potential office and/or commercial type of activity for additional residential in this area. So the Planning Commission unanimously is recommending denial of this ordinance to change the master plan for this property. So.
You say they denied it?
Yes, yes, sir, they did.
What was the reason?
Those that I gave, they don't want to give up the commercial aspects of the properties for additional residential uses.
Craig, I just say it's not, you know, we didn't feel like it was a good use for that property. We've, you know, zoned a lot, I mean, we've redone it a lot of times for those some apartments and stuff, and, you know, we're giving up all of our office space. And right there on the main drag on Hancock Street, it just wasn't going to be a good use. Everyone come out with Hancock. So we all figured it is, you know, we need to save it for our offices and stuff, so.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say. I totally agree. That's why I understand. So I, you know, I kind of agree with what the Planning Commission said, so.
I make a motion not to send it on.
Second.
And a motion, a second, not to approve or not to send it on. All in, any question or comments?
I'll just comment that this would be one time of note where the staff and the commission were in total agreement.
Staff and commissioner are frequently in agreement. Well, it's all the time.
All in favor, now send the council, let it be known, well, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Deny your man.
And that's what I wanted to get to, Mr. Cord. I didn't want to say it before you voted, but what I was going to say, the staff, the Planning Commission, and the council. So there you go.
Okay, item number five, you again, Mr. McCoy, orders number 02209-55.
Okay, this next item is a request to amend the zoning code, and it's a very minor amendment, really. Right now, we allow home occupations, and there's a lot of restrictions on those home occupations. But we only allow one home occupation per residence. So this change that we're requesting, it does some cleanup language mostly, is most of the changes, but it will allow more than one home-based business in a residence. So based on what's happened through the COVID pandemic that we had, we found out that obviously a lot of people want to and can work from home. So as long as they comply with the rules of the code, and we're really not changing those, all we're really doing is kind of rearranging where they are in the text of the ordinance. So we're transferring from one section to another to bifurcate it in such a way that it makes it easier to find that information that pertains to a particular use, or restrictions on parking, or signs, or things of that sort. So for the bulk of it, we're, really the only change is that we would allow more than one home occupation on a residential lot, residential dwelling unit.
Guys, we had a lot of discussion on this planning commission. It's not going to affect any homeowner association. You still can't park in the streets if you can't get off the street, you know, and on and on. So, but, you know, as many people is working out of their house now, it only makes sense to let, you know, there's more than one in households now that work out of their house. So it made sense for all of us. We need to change it. I'll make a motion, we send it on.
Motion by Mr. Overton, second by Mr. Fann. Any question or comments? All in favor, sending on, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six, fiscal year 2021 and 2022 annual report for the Planning Department. Mr. McCoy, City Planner again.
Okay, briefly want to report on what's been going on in the Planning Department in the last fiscal year. You have a summary of highlights, I'll call it, in your agenda package, and I want to indicate that we have annexed 24 acres. That was the Westfield Edition, which is about 11 acres, and then, of course, Big Station Camp Boulevard, that section of Big Station Camp Boulevard. Those were the two annexations. We adopted the new Plan Gallatin. That was our comp plan amendment. We've had 19 rezonings of 112 acres, and some of the notable projects are the Chandler Marketplace, the Fox Creek Development out next to Carrollton, Nichols Place, Phase Two and Three, and Oxford Station, Phase Four. They've also approved a number of master development plans, 65 master development plans, as a matter of fact. Most of those are amendments to a previously approved master plan and/or a final master development plan. But those keep moving along, and then we've had 67 subdivision plats, which included 662 lots, 42 site plans, some of the notable ones there, of course, Gallatin Miracle Park, a couple of Dutch Brothers, and Whataburger, which is, seems to be popular, some Facebook buildings, the Highway 55 diner, the transfer station expansion, rebuilding out there, the parking garage downtown, Tulip Poplar RV storage and mini storage facility, and then, of course, Nexus Tennessee sites out there. We processed seven variance cases, five conditional uses, had eight street public improvement acceptance, which were streets. Historic District issued seven certificates of appropriatenesses. We reviewed 236 building, or excuse me, business license. We also have reviewed quite a few of the engineering construction plans as part of our process there. And one, the big thing I want to report, and you may remember, oh, about five or six years ago, when we had requested a fee change, and we've had some other fee changes enveloped into the building codes, fee review process, but we were only covering about 17% of our cost about six years ago, and six, seven years ago. And now we're covering about over 70% of cost in our department. So development's paying that. That's pretty good, considering that we provide general public information, and a lot of things that we do are essentially free to the public, if you will, particularly providing the information and services, code enforcement, and things of that sort. So I think that's a good feat. We're going to be working on a fee study here. We already started. Nick will talk to you a little bit about that as well, because we're going to evaluate actually the true cost of doing various types of reviews. Now, we did that before, and so we're going to try to refine this fee structure to where we can get as close as we can to a full self-sufficiency in our department. So glad to answer questions about that, or any of the projects on the list there.
You want to have any question for Mr. McCoy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Appreciate it. Item number seven, Public Works Annual Report. Mr. Richard Dupree, Public Works Superintendent.
Good evening. Then y'all's a packet. I put some manual reports for our streets and stormwater and environmental services, some of the highlights from last year. One thing we hadn't done in the past very well was track actually how many potholes that we fill. I know y'all get a lot of calls on potholes. So we've been trying to do a lot better job at that. There was over 2,400 potholes last year repaired. Previously, on city streets, yes. Now for state riots, I can't speak on this.
2,465.
2,465, exact. Also, over five tons of debris and material cleaned out of catch basins. I know the other big issue is stormwater pipes. I get calls on with the pipes and catch basins being clogged up. So thought that was a pretty good number, and almost two and a half miles of linear foot of ditches being dipped and cleaned out for the stormwater side of it. On the environmental service side, we saw an increase in basically everything, not as much as we had anticipated, and I'm not sure if that's because of more people were leaving the household, going back to work, and there wasn't much trash generated in the house. On the recycling side, we saw a decrease actually in everything except for cardboard. A pretty significant increase in cardboard, but everything else dropped a little bit. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on any of the items, or want more specifics, you can get with me, and I can get that information for you as well.
Do I have any question for Mr.? Do I have any question for Mr. Dupree? Thank you. Now paving program for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three budget. Mr. Nick Tuttles, City Engineer.
May I interrupt and go back just one thing? I want to highlight something I don't think Richard highlighted. And that is the paving of the recycling center, because we do get a lot of calls about that, because the pavement's in such poor condition over there. That's all. Thank you.
Actually, on his, Bill was saying it's on my list. You're correct, Mayor. Last week, we, we included in your packet a recommendation for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three paving budget. And had some more conversations with Mr. Kellogg today. And based on some future plans of GPU, I would like to propose at least a freeze on a couple of these streets, probably pushing them off into next budget year and probably coming back to you for about, it's, it's about a hundred thousand dollars. And the streets that we have a conflict on are Davis Drive, Moss Circle, DeMoss Street and Hall Street. The, the other streets all appear to be okay. I know there are some other utility work. There is some more utility work that's going to happen. But I think that based on Mr. Kellogg's schedule, that we can still work those paving projects in after he gets finished, which is what we all want to see happen. So we've got some, some totals down here, but, but actually, we're gonna be a little bit less than that. I'll probably come back to you in a few weeks for that additional one hundred thousand dollars if we can strike off Davis, Moss, DeMoss and Hall Street at this point in time. But we're, we're very comfortable with the rest and moving forward with it, if you are.
Who do you start?
We were just talking with Rogers Group today about that. And we believe it's gonna be still a few weeks for us to get into their schedule. Our, our main guy, Mr. Brierley, is gonna be on vacation next week. But we'll be, we'll be ready to go as soon as they are. We do have some things with some prep work on public util, our public works side. So you'll see some things happen with them really right away as they make some repairs to curbs and some other just small pavement repairs. But as far as Rogers Group getting out there with their milling machine and their paving machine, we're probably at least a good month away.
What's the timeframe, I mean?
To get it all, and it, it really depends on when Roger shows up, how long they stay, and if they pull off. Because there, there's a lot of mobilization, demobilization. But to pave all of this, you're talking about a good, solid month of paving in Gallatin. But I'm sure it will be broken up into bits and pieces. The expectation is that everything on this list would be done before the end of the year.
That weather be a determining factor as well, too.
Of course, it, it affects, but I think that's building in some, some cushion for weather, having everything done before the paving season closes for the year.
Motion, send it on.
Motion, send the paving list on. Motion made by Mr. Hayes, second by Ms. George. Any other question or comments?
I have just one question for Mr. Tuttles. Did the county road superintendent reach out to you for a copy of that list? He's smiling, I guess that's.
He did.
All right.
We had a great conversation today. Very excited to work with Mr. Ellis.
Right. All in favor, let it be known, we send aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried and answered. Item number nine, development fee implementation. Mr. Tuttles, City Engineer, again.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. I actually was able to speak with almost all of you today, including those that aren't here. Just kind of checking in and seeing what kind of feedback that everyone has received. We, of course, reached out to our development community about two or three weeks ago, trying to request some feedback on what we've been proposing. We've been working on this proposal for actually a couple of years. We started on it back in twenty twenty and then twenty twenty happened and things got pushed to the, to the side for a little bit. But with all the work that we've done, all the communication that we've had with outside communities and, and having some good conversations with the development community, we feel like we're in a really good place. I, I'll say this, a couple of really important things, I think, for you to, to keep in mind as we move forward. We, we have already made some department restructuring. We'll have an additional admin starting next week to help with this fee. And the council actually approved in the budget some expected revenue for this. The expected revenue was, the, the idea was that this would be in place at the beginning of the budget. So we don't think that we're gonna hit that expectation. But depending upon how development goes in the spring, I think we could actually get close. We, we expect that on a fairly normal year to, to generate revenue in the range of three to four hundred thousand dollars with this proposal. And so that is money that really is, is being borne by the taxpayers at this point in time, because we've got two fees that we charge right now. It's a fifty-dollar land disturbance permit fee and a fifteen-dollar driveway permit fee. And so everything else, we have been really supplanting with the, the tax base there. And so we feel like this is certainly the way to go. The only regret I have is that we, we haven't begun to phase this in much, much sooner. And so it is, seems like a big hit and a big impact at this point in time. But I'd say we're really far behind. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna, I just wanna weigh in and say that this is kind of relevant to what Mr. McCord said earlier. This is kind of the progression that we've tried to do in the last several years so that the taxpayers aren't bearing any of the burden of development. There was a period in time when Gallatin was desperate for investment, and so we did essentially incentivize it. But that time has passed, and certainly we've done very, very well with our codes fees. And planning is doing pretty well, and now we're trying to get engineering there as well, and we'll be in great shape. In the memorandum, if you've not read it, that does a really good comparison of some of the surrounding communities and how we measure up to those. And I think we're in a sweet spot when you look at those numbers. And certainly, it is going to be hard on some of our developers who aren't used to it. But I think some of the feedback that you've gotten, based on what you've told me, is that this is not unexpected. It's typical and usual. And for those who work in other communities, they don't have heartburn over it.
And no one's shocked, no one's surprised. Really, the, the biggest question is just when will it happen so that they can begin to, to plan for it? So it, it's, it's really been a pretty good conversation with the development, the development community that we've had. I think the other biggest comment from, from one developer was, is there a fee that I could pay on top of this to, to get reviews done quicker? So they, they want the fast pass to the front of the line, but that would be a very difficult thing to manage. So I don't, I don't, I'm not suggesting that we do that, but I do think that it was a good idea.
Well, I'll piggyback off that. I, I spoke to three different developers, and they're all just exactly what Nick said. They're all not concerned about the fees that we're charging. They pay it everywhere else. They would like to see us get them done a lot quicker, but as Nick says, we'll get to that as soon as we can right now.
When, when you talked with them, Nick, did any of them suggest having a cap on it? I know there's two cities here have a cap on the amount of fees.
No, but a lot of the things that we have are set up in ranges here. The inspection fees are not. But the, the land disturbance permit fee is set up more as a range, and so inherently has a cap to it. But, yeah, we didn't really get that kind of feedback, but it is something we could consider.
Do you know why they did put a cap on it? Do you know any reasons they would have?
I guess maybe the, the Facebooks of the world. I, you're, you're, you're gonna be talking about some really significant developments before we put a cap on it. So, and those folks are usually not concerned about these kinds of fees. They've got way bigger things on their mind. But.
Just something that I just don't.
Yeah, we, we haven't had anyone say, say anything about that, but we can look at that a little bit more closely.
I also really like kind of how you design the inspection fees where real easy until you get to be very burdensome with re, or is that?
The re-inspect fee.
Re-inspect, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we did build in a couple of inspections, but we, we didn't want to penalize the folks that are doing things right. We want to set this up where if, if folks are not doing things the correct way, we, we can hit them with re-inspection fees. It's just like what, what our codes department does. And we tried to estimate really, maybe not exactly the best case scenario, but the very good case scenario. So our best developers, the ones that are really doing things in the most efficient ways, we based our fees on that. So it's not really penalize those folks for doing a great job. But, but also set ourselves up where if we do have those folks that, they're calling us out three, four, five, six times to look at the same thing, we can charge them additional money for that. And I think that's fair.
Any other question or comments for Mr. Tuttles?
What's the timeframe we're looking at?
What I would suggest, and we've kind of floated it out to the development community, is it's beginning, yes, January one. I think that gives plenty of time for folks to, to work this into their, their plans and their budgets.
Thanks, Steph.
We, we don't have, it, it is gonna be still a couple of weeks before we actually get the ordinance. We haven't worked with Susan on developing that, but I do think within two weeks, we'll have it ready to go. So it wouldn't be at your next council meeting that we would have something in front of you to vote on, but in three weeks from tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttles. Good job. Annual Stormwater Report. Mr. Tuttles, City Engineer, again.
I have some, some wonderful people in here behind me that I think they're gonna, they're, they're activating here and gonna go ahead and hand out a memo to you. The only thing that I wanted to say is I did want to remind you that the City of Gallatin is what's called an MS four, Municipal Separate Storm Source System. And this was kind of born out of the seventies, back fifty years ago, where our nation was really looking to try to improve the environmental aspects of the way that we live and, and do, community within our area. And so lots of what you're seeing here is based on the response to that and environmental stuff. But the environmental stuff made a way for us to also deal with the other part of stormwater, which is the quantity, the flooding issues. And, and so just a few years ago, the City of Gallatin passed a stormwater utility, and that's what we really want to give you a total update on, both our permit and keeping up with that and the utility, where we're trying to address those flooding concerns and other drainage issues. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Stormwater Utility Manager, Lance Wagner, and, and the rest of his group.
Good evening, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you. The main reason we come here tonight is a requirement. Our permit requires us to present the annual report that we submit to the state in an open forum and a public forum. So tonight, we're fulfilling that requirement, but we're also taking that opportunity to update you guys on what's going on and then update you on the utility side of things. So first off, I do want to start by recognizing the stormwater staff. You guys don't always get to see us. You get to see me a little bit, but you don't always get to see my staff. So the first person I'd like to point out and thank a lot is Courtney Crutcher. Courtney is our new stormwater coordinator. Courtney joined us back last November. And so Courtney Crutcher here. To my back here, Ryan, can you stand up for a second? So Ryan Fort is the reason you're getting less and less complaints about plans review time schedules. So he is my, my powerhouse back, yes, yes, yes. So I appreciate it, Ryan. Thank you. Rick Rorick is our stormwater technician, our inspector in the field, and he's done a great job. He's a seasoned pro at this, and he's a, a great job. And again, he's developed a great rapport with the developers and the contractors out there. He's not with us tonight, but he is definitely a big part of the group. We get a lot of support from just, just the engineering house. We're part of the engineering division. So I know we get from Nick and we get from others in the engineering house, so I want to extend a thank you to them, too. Public Works, when it comes down to the utility, engineering houses the utility administration. While Public Works houses the operations and, and the operation, we call it maintenance, but the maintenance and operations side of the house. So we work hand in hand with Public Works, so.
Richard, appreciate it. Thank you.
And to your guys. And GPU. Especially with our billing, GPU handles the billing for the utility. So we'll get into some of that. But I do want to give control over to Courtney, so she can kind of brief you on the report we submitted to TDEC and the highlights of that, and we'll bounce back and forth. Courtney?
Thank you for the kind introduction. And thank you also for the opportunity, opportunity to present our stormwater program and annual report to you this evening. I hope this reads somewhat like a thank you letter to all of the departments of the City of Gallatin. Everybody here has been excellent to work with. Both engineering and public works departments are committed to helping our community successfully manage our growth, both for a healthy and sustainable economy, to preserve all that Old Hickory Lake has to offer, from recreation, fishing, aesthetics, commerce, and most importantly, clean water. The municipal stormwater program has six major program areas under the state issued. We call them minimum control measures. In brief, that's the construction stormwater program, the illicit discharge program, post-construction stormwater program, municipal housekeeping, monitor and record, monitoring and record keeping, and public education outreach and participation program. If this captivates you at all, you can check out our website and review our annual, annual report online. It's on our stormwater documents page. This element of our permit covers a broad spectrum, and that's the construction stormwater program. I'd like to echo what Lance Wagner has mentioned about Ryan Fort and Rick Rorick for doing an excellent job with plans reviews and also the inspection process. They really help things move along quite nicely, and we really work really well together and in tandem with each other. Speaking of, Lance is gonna give you guys more of an update on the construction side of things.
So as Mr. McCord mentioned, we are a very busy city. We're trying to calculate how many plans we reviewed of this last year, and we stopped around five hundred. And that's plans, submittals, resubmittals, calculations, a lot of things. And that's just through the engineer, or the stormwater side of it. So about five hundred plans reviews. We also control the land disturbance permit process, so any developers getting land disturbance permits come through our department to get those. And right now, we have a hundred and ten active land disturbance permits in the city. I think that's a record. Last year at this time, we had ninety-three, I believe ninety-three. And even since the close of our annual report back in June, we've come up about fifteen more. And so we are a happening city with a lot of land disturbance going on. I always like to kind of share, too, that that's about fourteen thousand acres of, of ground inside Gallatin city limits that are being disturbed, which equates to about two point two square miles. If you're astute, you'll realize that's down a little bit from last year. That's because Facebook is actually starting to kind of turn things over and kind of pull things together. So a lot of our big developments are starting to kind of finish up, except for Nexus, which is just getting started. Courtney?
All right. So our next permit element includes our illicit discharge program. This year, we've had approximately fifteen people report that generated seven illicit discharge complaints and seven resolutions. This program allows for citizens to report when they see an illicit discharge. And you might wonder, well, what is an illicit discharge? It's anything other than stormwater that gets moved into our system, into our storm drains, which then end up into our lakes and eventually down into the Gulf of Mexico. Our illicit discharge program is young and it's still in its developing phase. We've been working to grow that part of our program so that we can really capture the discharges that take place. The next, oh, I'm sorry. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is our most notorious illicit discharge issue, which is the Town Creek Seep. And Lance is gonna tell you guys a little bit more about that.
A lot of you guys are familiar with that and the kind of historic district of town. We have a underground storage tank, gasoline storage tank linking. We've been working with TDEC on this for about the past four years. And we've, to date, had a couple of tanks removed, a couple of things put back together. I say we have, TDEC has had that happen, and we've worked with them. TDEC thinks it's under control and thinks we're, I'd say, on the mend from this, getting the petroleum out of our groundwater. But in conjunction with that, they've been doing a lot of remediation work in their groundwater. A lot, we'll see down near the end of Barton Street, near the Greenway down there, they've been doing a lot of. been doing a lot of what's called injections. So we've injected carbon into the groundwater to help clean that up. It seems to be working. I'm noticing a lot less odor, odor collants or odor issues in that area, and a whole lot less people complaining about seeps coming up in their backyard. So I hope that echoes what you're seeing. You're not seeing these anymore, but we think this is probably a turning point in the Town Creek Seep issue, and we'll be seeing it mend and work its way out over the next few years.
Hey.
Exactly.
So the next program elements I'll mention are the post-construction stormwater program, the municipal housekeeping program, and our monitoring program. Our monitoring, we really only get to do once every five years. So the last time that we did our monitoring was of visual assessments of our streams and analytical assessments of our streams. That happened two years ago, and we'll be looking to do that again this next permit cycle. We have completed projects in the city that have post-construction facilities that must submit annual reports. I think we've received more annual reports from those facilities than we have any year in, in Gallatin. So we'd like to thank those communities for participating in that so that we can continue to grow water quality or sustain it in the city of Gallatin. Also, I'd like to talk about our municipal housekeeping program, and it really couldn't have went as well as it did this year with the contribution, accommodation, and efforts of each department at the city of Gallatin. Gallatin Public Utilities, the Fire Department, the Police Department, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works all participated and allowed us to come into their home and check the inspections. And I have to say, they looked really good. I think it's, I think it's a testament to the, the departments here and each person that's over it. You can tell that each department takes pride in their facilities. And while some minor deficiencies were made, they were to be expected and normal, part of the wear and tear of any facility that you might see. Thank you guys so much for all of your hard work and effort. Finally, the most fun of our permit program elements is the public education outreach and participation program. Both engineering and public works are very happy to participate in programs that allow us to educate kids and adults about stormwater because we love it so much. We work alongside to our citizens, cleaning up streams and neighborhoods, hosting booths at career days, organizing the urban runoff 5K and water quality festivals, and teaching kids about the critters and the creeks. Diana Johnson with Public Works is a great leader for organizing and participating in these events. Thank you so much, Diana. 12 official cleanups took place under Diana's supervision that contributed to the removal of more than 7,000 pounds of litter from our catch basins and city spaces. Finally, before I hand the presentation over to our stormwater utility manager Lance Wagner, I would just like to mention Public Works is super fantastic to work with on stormwater drainage projects under the leadership of Richard De Priest. They have a special set of skills, excellent customer service. In addition to Public Works, all of departments were incredibly accommodating again in facilitating those internal inspections. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. As for the utility itself, I'm happy to report that utility collections are on par with what we expected. They are growing. This year, we collected 1.9 million dollars in, in fees. That's up from last year at 1.8, and that's expected with the growth we've been having. We're able to increase, as new homes, new businesses come online, we assess a fee, a stormwater fee to them, and so that grows with that. So it is what we expected, and it is growing with how we expect. On average, we're getting about 82 new accounts a month, which that's a mixture of residential and business, residential and commercial, but mostly residential at the moment. Couple of projects, a couple of big things we're working on is mapping the city stormwater system. I know we've started to roll this out in pre-app meetings to show developers, when they're looking at a development, it's always been a big question is how it drains, how it goes, what's the terrain look like around that development? We can now show them that in a much better way. So we have a mapping system that we compile, we put together, we're working with a consultant, and we get our storm drains mapped and be able to show them, this is your parcel of land, this is what drains in and drains out. And that's providing to be a, a great tool to increase development, to get the developers a little more confident and comfortable with what's going on. And for us, as we review those plans and review stuff, to know what's going on in that watershed, in that area. So we're real happy about that, that mapping process we have going on. We're working on a drainage improvement project on Anthony Street. This has been going on for a while, and we're working with the consultant because it's got some tricky issues, especially near the bottom of the, of the watershed. So we hope to get that under construction in this next fiscal year, but we've got a lot of the design work kind of wrapped up and some easement work done this past year. Hell Avenue and the Windsong Drainage Study Area, this is working with Windsong. Last year, as before, we talked about we're working with consultant to try to figure out some of the drainage issues in that Hell Estates. Our consultant had some ideas on ways we could, and a lot of that, those ideas, we're working with the Windsong development. And so we reached out to that developer, and we've got some good traction with him. And we may have some other projects spinning out of that to help a little more that flooding in Hell Avenue Estates area. We have another one in Inniswood Meadow Lake. This is another one where we're working with GPU, and GPU is now looking to move a pump station, sewer pump station, which will open up some free area to get a drainage swell in a good spot. So we can talk through that, but that's also a great project we've been working on to try to clear up some, some ongoing flooding issues that we've had in the city for a while. I'll wrap it up with Nat Caldwell Park. I know we've worked with the mayor on this quite a bit. We've got money appropriated this year to do the environmental, environmental assessments to start moving forward with the Corps of Engineers to start that process. And so we're working with the consultant right now to scope out exactly what would be in those environmental assessments and how to get that done. So that is actively being scoped out. We hope to have that moving in under contract probably around Christmas time. Always you have initiatives and challenges, or I won't say initiatives, I'll say challenges. So the things we're going to be working on next couple of years, or this next year, is again, streamline that process of plans review, making sure we get that as quick and as efficient as possible. But to that end, we are having the challenge of the MS4 permit. So we do operate under an MS4 permit, and some of you may have heard that the state has issued a new MS4 permit, or actually issued it about two years ago, and then it was contested in court. And so we kind of sat in limbo with what we're going to do next because we had a permit, but not the new permit. Back on September 1st, they reissued our, again issued that MS4 permit, and we're kind of excited just to have closure and move forward, but it has now also been contested in court again. So we're still in limbo a little bit of where that, what that means going forward. We have a good idea of what it's going to shake out to be, we think, and we'll start working towards those, those ways. But hopefully, Christmas time or thereafter, I'm hoping to be able to come to you guys with some stormwater ordinance updates and stuff like, some ordinance updates in order to match what's in that new permit.
Are, are, do you have knowledge of what the challenges were, why it did wind up in court? I mean, because it might be interesting to just throw a couple of those out.
I, I can, I can. There's a provision in the, in the new permit that says roof water does not have to be treated, or I'm paraphrasing, so.
Good enough.
Good enough for right now. And sometimes there's a good reason why you may not need to consider roof water, but sometimes there is. This depends on the locations and the buildings and stuff. And so different groups are seeing this different ways, different groups are wondering how it impacts stuff. And in some ways, if you just omit that roof water and then you don't change anything else, that volume of water could hurt the system below it if you're not accounting for it. But if you do account for it and bypass it, it could be worked in. So there's some differences there, just how people are, are understanding the roof water concept. The next concept that's really big on the contention is can you put stormwater control measures, detention ponds, bio retention ponds, inside of stream buffers? And again, depends how you want to see it, depends on the size of the watershed. The state's language doesn't make provisions for different watershed sizes and stuff like that. So I can see some pros and cons both ways, and then we can work through examples if you like. But those are the two main issues that I'm aware of.
I'm assuming that that's, those are things that TDEC, TDEC was asking for, more conservative approach, and developers and municipalities push back for a more liberal approach, is my guess.
Um.
I'm going to get the Lance Wagner explanation, aren't I?
Yeah, I'm trying to think how to, how to phrase that right for you.
I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm just assuming.
Yeah. So through the lawsuit and, and through some of these court hearings, I, I won't say one's a conservative approach versus a, a non-conservative approach, it's.
I don't mean that politically. I meant, I meant, yeah.
I would think that, geez, I would take a, an environmentally conservative approach if, if it was me and how I'll try to guide some things, because I think the more, more open space we preserve, the more resilient we become as a city. And I think the, the more we can be resilient for floods and issues in the future, I think the better off. So that, that's the approach I would want to take with it on some of these, as I look at the permit and as we address this in our ordinance. But there'll be much more time to debate that once we get told by TDEC how this is going.
We want to protect our water, but I think we're still in infancy of this, and so we're still baby stepping.
Very true, very true, very true. It's always a good time and place for both sides of the argument. So that's one of our challenges, just balancing out those changes in that permit. Let's see, what else can I bring out of here? We're always trying to keep up with development, and then again, we're trying to get back to a point where we can focus back on capital improvement projects like that Anthony Street project. So we're trying to get development settled and our processes settled so we can actually spend a little more time on those larger capital improvement projects. With that, I will open up, so. I can open up the floor if you have any questions of us or any questions on.
Do I have any question for Mr. Lance or Ms. Courtney? Thank you all for that report.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Well done. That concludes our agenda for the evening. Now we're upon the other business. Any council member have anything?
Somebody I do. Could we, at the next work session, I don't need anybody to do any work before then or anything, but could we just put the liquor store stuff back on the next work session so we can have some discussion? We've got a lot of people to ask about it, so.
What?
Liquor store.
I thought you said next door, and I thought, oh no. I missed what's on next door.
Need a second on that?
No, we're just.
Just ask what we put on there, just for discussion on it.
Anything specific about it for Ms. Hamacollis?
No, no, just.
There's anything that needs to be researched? If you please let me know ahead of time, I would appreciate it.
Don't have to research, that's why I said that at first. You don't have to research anything, we just want to put it on there and talk about it.
We'll put that back on the agenda for, for two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other department, any other council member have anything?
Yes, I would like to revisit the HP annexation. I think we went through that fairly quickly.
Set back on for two weeks? Is that what you asked?
Well, I, I think in that circumstance, and I think it makes sense to put that off until we had our other council members present. And Ms. Hamacollis, you may want to guide this because I don't think it's something that we've done, but it was in, something that was turned down. And so I don't know if it needs to happen in a meeting or a work session, and it would have to be somebody that was on the no side to ask to essentially, I think, well, I guess they could discuss it outside of actually recalling it, recalling.
I, I would need to do some research, and I mean, I'm sorry, I don't have every ordinance that's come before us memorized as to exactly what happened on it.
Oh, so is it what Trump did.
So I, you know, I don't want to give any answers tonight.
It was actually on the no side, originally on the yes side.
But I don't know the, I mean, I don't know if we can discuss it without asking to recall the vote. It was, it was an annexation. It wasn't actually, you said HP Townhomes, it wasn't Townhomes, it was actually the annexation of property.
Right.
And that, oh, it's all parts for part.
I'll, I'll look into it. So maybe put that on the next work session for discussion if Ms. Hamacollis says we can. If not, we'll address it at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Any other council member have anything? I have about two or three things, quickly. Ms. Rowland, I have, Ms. Brown, could you give us an update, a progress report on Clevee Park? Where we standing? Are we moving? Are we still? Are we backing up or what?
Backing up. David Brown, Leadership Services, Parks Director. I think we're waiting on the contractor to come back with all the details for the mayor to sign for the, the companies to start doing their surveys and.
So we do have a contractor?
We have, we did choose one, but he has not come back with their proposal to the mayor, I don't think.
Gotcha.
I think that's.
I haven't seen a contract.
Two weeks ago. I think that's what Rosemary said two weeks ago.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure we, we moving. Also, Mr. Tuttle, either, Mr. De Priest, that, that drainage issue that we had on Demal Street and Bly Avenue, what, what we, what was the conclusion on that? Because Ms. McMurray had called me about that and.
The one that I called you about yesterday?
Uh huh.
Yeah, that pipe is the, the neighbor downstream of her, her driveway tile is, it's not completely clogged up, but there's some debris in it that we're, we're going to, we've already got a work order created to get it cleaned out.
Okay. That's the ditch in the, the pipe, but we're not authorized to go on the propping because that ditch is, you know, over a period of time whether it drained from the previous street down, you know, that way is kind of building that ditch up, making that water go up to Ms. McMurray's front yard and porch.
Right. What we talked about was the ditch being in her backyard would be off of any kind of public property or easement. And so to do something back there, we would need some public purpose, or at least an easement. And Susan's shaking her head. So it's, it's, that's the issue that we have, being able to get off of public property or right of way and without any easement or anything like that, and, and try to justify some public purpose. So we really don't, in, in other words, we don't have any business back there.
Okay. Ms. McCoy, Ms. Susan, can, can the homeowner do anything about that ditch since it's on her.
First of all, I have, I don't know the specifics about what you're speaking. I'm just agreeing in general that to do work, we have to have a public purpose. If it's not in our, in our right of way, and we don't, if we don't have an easement. But I can certainly speak with Mr. Tuttle and Mr. De Priest and.
Then I'll get with you too, so I know what you.
You can call me, yes.
Okay. All right. One other thing, or two, one other thing, let, let me think. Well, have all of you seen the new fire truck?
Yeah.
Yes.
All of the public who have not seen the new fire truck, you need to go see it. It's beautiful, it's huge. And I want to thank the Fire Department for the little display that you done up on Blackmoor Street for that daycare center. Those kids were just excited. So I felt good knowing that that was in my district and the kids really enjoyed it. So thank you so much, chief. I appreciate that to the high. And on that, my final note, on a sad note, please be in prayer for the Offit family and the pastor, Mr. Randy Offit. I know probably you all probably knew the dad. Mr. George Offit, who used to play the trumpet and, and stuff, Randy passed on last evening. Rangers are incomplete at this time, but just keep that Offit family in your prayers. Any other council member have anything?
I have some.
Mayor?
I have just a couple of red closures. The first one is for the 29th, which is a Thursday, and it's from 7:00 until 9:00 a.m. and it's a request to close Franklin Street. Not all of Franklin Street, the part, the part between Water and I guess probably the City Hall parking lot. What they're doing is they're moving the Blues Jewelry sign, and so they need to close that street so they can get it moved. They don't think it'll take very long, but it will be within that window. And there are signatures from the property owners and from our department heads, and like I said, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m.
Motion made by Mr. Overton to close Franklin Street, oh, what part?
Frank, it's going to be Franklin from about City Hall parking lot to.
Second by Ms. George.
Water.
Any other question or comment? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried ahead. I have, since you mentioned Franklin Street, I, I had a, a call about Franklin Street. Ms. McCoy, you know, we talked about that, where the Anderson Funeral Home is on that corner there, they were trying to open up another business, but because you said a change of use plan that they would have to take out, dig up the asphalt and redo the parking lot, they would lose like 11 parking spaces, put in greenery.
Yeah, that's part of the zoning code that was adopted, consistent with state statute.
Yeah, that's part of the zoning code that was adopted, consisted with state statute when there's a change of use, that the site has to be brought, with the exception of the building, that site has to be brought in compliance with the zoning regulations. So we don't require anybody, if a building's encroaching into a setback or something, to remove a building. We wrote that out specifically, but other aspects of the zoning code would have to be implemented. And a good example of that, I think most of you are aware, is the Tennessee Quick Flash and the Pelican snow.
I understand, but that, that building been there forever. It was there before the sidewalks were there.
That one was built in 1966, that corner building.
But that was before we had the sidewalks there. Yeah, it was there before the sidewalks there. I've been here and there a long time.
The sidewalk was constructed.
Yeah, but, but my, my thing is, the sidewalks were put there to drive across, and it just seemed like odd to me that you can drive across it if it's a office, but you can't drive across it if it's a personal use, like a. Does the state regulate that?
Well, it's just the change of use. It's, it's by state statute.
So, so if, if.
It's, it's what we would hold, you know, it's not being treated any differently than, than anyone else. And I don't know anything about it either, I'm just.
I think, I think what the question is, and I've been discussing this with planning too, trying to find some kind of way that would make it workable, but, and I do have some more information to talk to you all about, but I think the question, their question, the property owners, the potential tenants' question, and Councilman Alexander's question is all, is there some way to make, is there some way to get a variance so that they don't have to do it? Because really, they're viewing this as a short-term use of that property, not the final and best use of that property, which they anticipate in the next few years.
If it was to convert back from that personal use to office space, then what would they do?
Well, and, and, well, it would, it would be okay in that instance, but I think, because the same code would apply, it wouldn't make them change anything. But I think also there's some, some, some disagreement on the characterization of the type of business that it is. I mean, the office that was there until a few months ago was insurance, and they would argue that this service is not that different than the service that was provided through that office prior. So, I mean, this is not really something for this meeting, I understand, and like I said, that's why I have more information, want to talk to you guys more about it. But I understand their frustration, but I understand our parameters and just trying to help navigate it for the benefit of, you know, the property owner and the tenant.
I'd be like, like Mr. McCoy said, I took Pelican's bill, we went round and round trying to, it was obvious issue, and he had to put in the green grass and take up, I don't know how many parking spaces, they take up bill, they took up a bunch out of that one.
Well, the landscaping of that one was in the right of way, and they did have some exceptions that were approved to allow because of excessive right of.
It was the same situation though, where they had to back it up and put it in.
It just seemed like a building that old would be grandfathered in.
If that one out there is probably older than that one, I don't know, but it's, that one there was built a long time.
I, I think the issue is some, some portal through which you could provide a window before that change had to take place. Because, like I said, it's not the final or best use of that property. It's not their vision for what will be there ultimately. But in the meanwhile, they've got a building they'd like to rent to somebody.
And I would hate for them to have to lose those 11 parking space because, you know, Christian tile used that parking space and so does the funeral home.
Especially right now.
Yeah, yeah.
And go for the next several years.
Funeral home using that parking space over there too, so.
Yeah, so, so the parking garage has kind of put them in a situation where they know they're not going to move forward with their vision while that's going on. And I hadn't thought about the fact that Christian Towers and, and the senior center are using that parking too right now, so I hadn't thought about that, but that's a good point too. So anyway, there's all sorts of kind of extenuating impacts that, that I think make us feel like we need to find a way to look at it in a different way. But we can discuss that further. I don't know that this is the place, because it wouldn't go through that.
You know, it was in my district, and I had a phone call in Gossland, that's the reason why I was bringing it up tonight. Okay, thank you, Ms. McCoy, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Most of the street closed, Mayor?
Yes, I do. This one is for the L on the Historic Square. I have not done what I am supposed to do on this. This is for the Homer Bradley Motorcycle Ride. The, the signatures have been gotten by the businesses, the Occupy, the L on the square. It would be closed from 8:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. on Saturday, October 8. What I have not gotten is the department head's signatures. So if you guys would consider, I mean, I can bring it back if you need me to, but if you would consider approving it based on the department, no department heads jumping up and saying, oh, no way, and then I've got to get EMS approval as well. But I just got the signatures back from the retailers today.
Most approve of their signature.
No, it'd be the street closure.
Councilman Alexander is asking if we could do it, and I think that you can do it pending approval.
Pending, pending the signatures, yes. Pending acceptable, acceptable signatures. If you guys would stick around, thank you.
Mr. Overton made a motion, I second it. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried now. That take care of our meeting for tonight. It says nothing from any department. I'm getting there, I'm getting there. Anything from the department heads?
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Good evening, council. Just a couple of things. We are working with the Cotton Town Fire Department to provide mutual aid to the Liberty Creek School Complex in the event of a fire, an EMS incident, or other incident where life or property is threatened. We've been working with them to establish common SOGs for incident management and communication. But for routine incidents, they'll request assistance on a case-by-case basis. And for this, we're going to use a state mutual aid law that really already structures where one fire department or one emergency agency can provide assistance to another emergency agency without entering into formal agreements. But we will have a simple document that the fire department will sign and representative from Cotton Town Fire Department will, will sign. And that's a request from the Emergency Communications Center to have that on file. So when an address comes in for a reported emergency at the Liberty Creek School Complex, they'll send the Gallatin Fire Company as well to their, to assist with any problem there on the school campus. And then the next thing is, thank y'all very much for your support. I know that the fire department and the men and women appreciate that. And as Mr. Alexander said, the, the new platform fire truck sitting outside, if you haven't had a chance to come look at it, please come down when the meeting's over with. Thank you.
Take a sprint spin on around the block. Any other department heads?
Too expensive.
One thing, I don't know if you all have checked your email today. I don't know of Ms. Smiley, if you want to say anything or just wait till you see your email. Do you want me to say something? Okay. Ms. Smiley has submitted a letter to each of you and to me that she is going to retire at the end of the year. Of course, we hate to lose her, but she is also trying to be very thoughtful about getting a person in place as soon as possible so that there can be a smooth transition. And so she and I both are working with HR to figure out the timeline to get that job posted, establish a panel to evaluate, and get the interviews done and get somebody here before she's gone for a good transition period.
Don't, don't we have to vote on that before she leave?
Huh?
Never mind.
But, oh, vote on whether or not you let her go home? Well, I, I ignored her for several weeks, and that didn't really work. So I kept saying, let's negotiate this, and she's not negotiating.
Don't want to lose nobody. Any, anything else? Any department heads?
Most adjourned.
Second.
Motion is second. We are done.